Welcome to the regular meeting of the Blacksburg Planning Commission for tonight, Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024. Regular meetings of the Blacksburg Planning Commission are held here in the Rodgeri Heads' Pass chambers of the Blacksburg Municipal Building on the first Tuesday of each month at 6:30 PM. We discuss the planning commission during specified times on the agenda and are requested to adhere to the following: Please speak at the podium. Please state your name and address. Direct comments only to the commission. Please limit speaking time to a maximum of three minutes. And speak only once during a specific hearing or comment period. A wireless microphone is available to anyone requesting assistance. Please silence all cell phones, show respect for all speakers, and allow all opinions to be expressed in a tolerant atmosphere. And we'll call the meeting to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Britt, Mr. Erman, Mr. Ford, Ms. Jones, Mr. Cassoff, Ms. Cassie, Ms. Reinhardt, Ms. Walker, I am here. We have a quorum.
Wonderful. The first item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda, which is very short. It's the approval of the Planning Commission minutes for August 6th, 2024, and the proposed action is to approve. Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second?
All those in favor? Move on to our public hearings. And our first public hearing is EXP 24-1, Exception Request for Agricultural Use in RR1 on a lot less than two acres at 301 Royal Lane by Anthony Gravsky, the owner. And I have before me a statement of complete disqualification, which is a declaration of interest with respect to transaction in which members of the planning commission may not or elect not to participate in accordance with Virginia Code 2.2315F. This declaration is made with respect to those transactions in which a member of the planning commission may not participate at all by virtue of law or by reason of his or her choice. The Virginia State Local Government Conflict of Interest Act requires that I make this disclosure to be recorded in town records in any case in which I am forbidden to participate or decline to participate for reasons related to the act. Therefore, I make the following disclosure. The basis for my disclosure for disqualifying myself in this matter is my home is adjacent to the subject property. While the Conflict of Interest Act may not or might not permit my participation, I am disqualifying myself to avoid any appearance of impropriety. I affirmatively state that I will not vote in any manner, act on behalf of the planning commission regarding this special exception request, EXP 24-1. And I've turned a signed copy of this into the planning director. So with that, I'm going to leave the dais. Mel Jones, our vice chairman, will facilitate this public hearing. And when this public hearing closes, I'll return to the dais and I'll facilitate our second public hearing. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Do you want to ask, just to confirm?
Oh, it wouldn't hurt. We're wondering if we still have a quorum without Andy.
Five.
What's the rule?
I can answer that.
It's five of nine. We're okay.
We're okay? All right.
Yep.
Okay, well then we'll start with a staff presentation by Matthew Sampa.
This is a special exception request to allow agricultural use on a lot that is less than two acres in the RR1 zoning district. The request was made by the property owner, Anthony Gravsky, and the subject property is located at 301 Royal Lane. The request was initiated after town staff received complaints about farm animals on the property. The applicant was sent a violation letter on June 24th, 2024, and the special exception request was subsequently filed on July 7th. The request is to keep one pig and two goats as pets on the property. The subject parcel is a one-acre corner lot with frontage on Royal Lane and Farmview Drive. The lot contains a single-family dwelling with a fenced rear yard. Here's an aerial view showing the subject area alignment. Special exceptions are evaluated per 1112 of the zoning ordinance. Exceptions can be granted by the town council. The comprehensive plan, purpose of the zoning district, and intent of state would be evaluated in the exception. Exceptions are typically use and design standards such as parking in front of the front building line or buffer yard modifications. And most special exceptions will be heard with an accompanying conditional use permit or rezoning enacted upon in conjunction with the action on the CUP or rezoning petition. However, exception requests to use in design standards may be made without accompanying rezoning or CUP application. Here's the site layout with the applicant. Here is the site layout provided with the application that shows the enclosure area where the animals are kept. Proposed special exception conforms to the general guidelines and policies contained in the comprehensive plan. Applicable sections of the plan should be included in the review of the application. Future land use designation of the subject area is low-density residential. Specific uses are also governed by the implementing zoning district. Agriculture is a byright use in the RR1 zoning district. The subject area is also in urban development area H and is in a suburban residential neighborhood. Although these neighborhoods frequently abut agricultural land in open space, agriculture is not a common use within these neighborhoods. Showing the future land use of the property and surrounding areas. And this map shows the current RR1 zoning in green. The definition of agriculture seen in zoning ordinance section 2103 states that the keeping of a pig or goat is to agriculture regardless of the size of the animal and purpose for which it is kept. Although agriculture is a byright use RR1, the use in design standards for agriculture state that the parcel size must be greater than two acres. The applicant has requested an exception to this standard. Although the keeping of a pig is considered agriculture and agriculture is an allowable use in RR1, Town Code Section 5-105 restricts the keeping of a pig to within agricultural or forest districts. Per the town attorney, the town code and zoning ordinance are inconsistent with each other in this regard, and if the exception is granted, an amendment to Town Code Section 5-105 would also be necessary to allow the keeping of hogs in areas other than in an agricultural or forest district. The intent of keeping of animals and minimize impacts such as noise, dust, water quality, air quality, A neighborhood meeting was held on August 7th. A number of applicants, of the applicant's neighbors were in attendance and voiced concerns over the welfare of the animals, the number of animals the applicant plans to obtain in the future, how they allow use would affect surrounding property values. During the work session, several topics of discussion arose for which staff has provided updates. Specifically, whether it would be appropriate to include a condition to limit the special exception to the lifespan of the animals or to specific breeds or sizes. Staff believes that a condition for a specific time period such as 10 years would be more appropriate. Condition to limit the special exception to 10 years can be added at the planning commission's request. Further, a condition for specific sizes or breeds is not recommended because it would be difficult to enforce. There was also discussion on the possible town code amendment to allow hogs in districts other than agricultural or forest districts. The town attorney has advised that the planning commission's decision can be made with necessity to the specific special exception requirements and conformity to the comprehensive plan, the purpose of the zoning district, and the intent of the standard in question. Staff program is the following two questions dealing with the keeping of only one pig and two goats in the location of the stay area. That concludes my presentation. I can answer.
Any questions for staff? Okay, then we will move on to the applicant presentation.
Excuse me, while he's getting that loaded. Good evening, commissioners, councilmen. Thank you for having me here, giving me this opportunity to present this to you. I'll probably be rehashing several of the things that were presented at the work session, but I also wanted to try to maybe address some of the questions, the discussion that came up during that work session to hopefully answer any of those questions or concerns.
Someone in the back saying they can't hear.
They can't hear?
I don't think you have to lean over, just see a little louder.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, just a quick presentation here this evening. Sorry, I'm normally like really good with public speaking, but there's a lot on the line here and I'm just nervous. So I just want to walk you again through our property, 301 Royal Lane, introduce you to the three animals that we are requesting this exemption for. And as Mr. Sampa noted, regardless of what we're keeping them for, even though they're pets, I understand, but I just want to reiterate or reinforce the notion that we're not running a production facility in the backyard, that these genuinely are like a cat or a dog or a fish or a turtle, whatever you keep at home, are pets and members of our family. So I'll start here with Mr. Brutus. He is a Cooney Cooney breed pig. And so on the left there, this is, this is when I met Brutus at the veterinary teaching hospital at Virginia Tech. He had been brought in, he had been attacked by something, likely dogs, things like that. The owners brought him in and the discussion was essentially, there's no shame in euthanizing this animal, he's pretty beat up. The owner's elected to move forward with some pretty aggressive wound management treatment. And so underneath that little sponge-looking thing on his head is where his left ear used to be. He had lost that during that. So anyhow, fast forward about eight weeks later, and Brutus was making a really great recovery. Unfortunately, his owners had stopped answering the phone and had left him at the hospital. I met Brutus just because the staff were all super, not excited, but they just thought he was a really neat animal. He was, they got the impression that he had been raised as a family pet and not, you know, for food. Anyhow, being a Buckeye and his name being Brutus, we kind of formed this instant bond. And when it was time for him to be discharged, we had him neutered, had him vaccinated, and brought him home with us as a pet. And so there on the right, you can see early on, after he came home, he spent a lot of time inside with us. You can see he's fairly small. It's my son, who at the time was 11. You know, he, at that time, he was about the same size as our corgis. He's very affectionate, very social, very well behaved. This was that first winter, he was with us there on the left, and it was really cold. This was one of those weeks where we were well into the single digits and probably even colder with the wind chill. And so we brought him in with us, and he made himself at home on a dog bed and spent the night inside. On the other evenings when he wasn't sleeping in the house, he was sleeping in the garage in a crate. And then on the right there, that's Brutus at Easter doing his best Cadbury Bunny impression. And we were thinking he might have an issue with this, but we'll see if it'll run. Okay. So this was just a video, again, to demonstrate Brutus's temperament. And so he went on a walk, just like a dog would, with my son, down the block. And so you see, he doesn't, he doesn't run off, he's not making, making a ruckus or anything like that. He was just following his buddy down the street and back to the house. And so then here are LJ and Ziggy. And so LJ, for anybody that is familiar with the early days of YouTube, is short for Leroy Jenkins. But if you're not, LJ, it works just fine. They were four weeks old when they came home with us. We bottle-fed them until they were approximately 12 weeks old, as they had not been weaned. You can see there on the right, his brother Ziggy in the backyard. Again, very curious, very social animals there on the left. Again, my wife would kill me if she knew this picture was in the presentation. But, you know, much like a dog, they just, they want attention, they want snuggles, and they really like their grain in the morning and in the evening. There on the right is Ziggy doing a, doing, I don't know what impression he's doing, but he got caught up in a blanket there and was at the back door asking for some help to get that off of his head. So these next couple of pictures, one, here's Leroy and Ziggy, again, full grown. They're the size of a large dog, height, size-wise, they each weigh about 50 pounds. They're both also castrated. We took them in and had that, again, with the intent of, we have no intent of having more goats or more pigs or things like that. But this is also to just show the enclosure that they're in. So behind them is their shelter, where they sleep in the evenings, and we close that up when it's cold out and have provisions to put a heat lamp in there to keep them warm. That's where we also keep their hay that they supplement, the grass and things like that. Here is the enclosed area that you saw from that aerial view. And I know on the aerial fence extending over that, we did have the property professionally surveyed, and we are inside of the property lines there. I know the GIS can only be as accurate as it can be, but, you know, the intent here is just, again, to show the condition, one, of the yard, that it's not mud, it's not feces, it's, you know, we keep it, we keep it very clean, at least as clean as we can. There's that little bit of space there in front of the fence that divides them from our side of the yard, where they run back and forth in the morning and the evening when they're waiting for their food. So that's a little worn down, but that's nothing that can't be patched or repaired. And that's what we have. So, you know, some of the additional information I wanted to make sure that I provided was, so going to Brutus, I know one of the questions or a comment that was made was about, you know, pigs and they, they're, they continue to grow over their lifespans. And so I did reach out to my veterinarians and ask that question. And while they'll continue to grow in weight and girth as, feed them and fatten them up for other uses than pet keeping, they, they will reach a terminal physical size. And particularly with Brutus, we're very mindful of his, his weight, his, his structure, because we want him to be healthy, we want him to live a good life. So we try not to over-treat him. And he, his breed is a pasture pig, so he just munches grass. He's, he's an herbivore by, I guess, by birth, and that's what he does at our yard. So he keeps that side of the fence pretty well down. I'm trying to think of anything else. I know that was a big one. We addressed, you know, the waste and things like that. So as Mr. Sampa noted in the staff report, you know, one of the elements of agriculture, zoning and things like that is, is, you know, to reduce dust, odor, anything like that. And one of the things that never came up during any of our meetings with our neighbors or anything was the smell, was the state of the yard or anything like that. So again, I just want to reassure folks that we're, we're, we feel compelled to give these animals the best environment, the best food, the best life that they can while they're with us, just as we would, like I said, our dogs or our cats or our kids or anything like that. So I just wanted to make sure I made those points. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this special exception?
Hi, evening. Welcome. Thank you for letting me speak. I am a neighbor, live just a block away, and I've been living in that area for a while. I mean, I'm sure Brutus is very cute and everything, but let's get to the point. It looks like a farm already, the area. It's a little bit disorganized. This area there on Farmview Road is very dangerous. People, just my car about two months ago, while I was waiting to turn into my house, it was total. Somebody driving with a phone, residents of Warmheart, which are hundreds, elderly people drive in that route. And I am sure, as we know, goats look very cute, so people is going to go and turn, distracted again. For me, it's a main concern that the fact that they grow is already dangerous, it's only 25 miles a speed, but they go 45, 55, even the police know that this is dangerous. So I think putting animals in that area is not the right thing, one thing. Again, the fact that I received this notice on July, on July the 19th, and he already have animals there. He has a whole bunch of chickens. I can't count from the row, but I see a lot of chickens, the goats, the pig, and who knows what else is going to be nest. This area is residential with homes of the value of $600,000, $500,000, a couple homes for sale in there. And I just don't think it is an agricultural area. I don't think it's the right thing to give it, basically, basically almost give a price to somebody who took his own, by his and pigs, and then now is asking for permission to have these animals there. I think the first thing they need to do is ask the petition to see if he can have the animals there. And if yes, well, then the neighbors can agree or not with it, and the council members. But to me, it's a reward for somebody who didn't do things right to begin with. So I really think that it's not an area for this type of animals. The highway is just across the street, right there. And what about if the chickens get out? What about if the pig get out? I just don't think it's appropriate to, to give him the permit to have the animals there. It devalue the properties of that are around. And the neighbors already, I had talked to many neighbors, says, yes, we don't like it. Many people don't take the time and come here and do this, but the neighbors don't agree. They hoping that the town, the town will say, no, this is not for this type of animals.
You're out of time. But before you go, would you say your name and address?
My name is Marlo Pupas, live in 300 Grandview Drive.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Lisa Sedlak. I live at 303 Royal Lane, which is directly next door to the Gravskys. So a couple of things I'd like to address is the animals that are in question here are on our side of the property and not up by Farmview, so I don't know exactly how people can see them from Farmview when they're driving. And I'm also here to speak on behalf of myself and my husband Neil. We have lived next to the Gravskys for years. There are goats and their pig. They cause no noise, no smell. They're a joy to be around. And in fact, just today, I had a Zoom meeting where I took the computer over so I could show this little kid, you know, look at the goats, it's so cute. The Gravskys take really good care of their animals. They're there often. I see Anthony out there all the time feeding them, the kids playing with them, and just, they're just such a joy. One of the things I did want to address, though, is that there was a consideration or a concern that, you know, if we allow this to happen, we're going to, you know, somebody else is going to come along and somebody else is going to come along. And so one of the things I want the planning commission and the town to consider is that we are in a rural residential area, and it has the word rural in it. And so I think that maybe some of the things we should consider is maybe treating things at a case-by-case basis when it comes to having animals in a backyard under two acres, because we are in a rural area. One of the other things that was mentioned and addressed was the comprehensive plan, and it showed that the area in that area, or that area will be growing in 10 to 20 years. This property is across the street from South Wake Park, I think it's called, and I really don't see any other homes or any So, long story short, I'm here to say that I support this exception, and I hope you guys will consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else who would like to speak regarding this exception request? All right, then we have an opportunity for the applicant rebuttal. Would you like to address anything that was said during the comment section?
Yeah. Thank you. So I think the Sedlak there hit on the one piece of it, you know, as it relates to them potentially being a distraction to drivers on Farmview Drive. You know, again, this exception request is to keep them in that one side of the yard, which is as far away from Farmview Drive as you can get. And with the topography of the land, Farmview sits, or our property sits up several feet above the roadway, and again, with them tucked back, I can't guarantee that they can't be seen, but I think you have to be pretty distracted to, or know that what you were looking for in order to potentially be distracted by them. So there was that part. And then, again, to piggyback on the rural residential piece of this, there are at least two properties in our neighborhood that are greater than two acres and, you know, would be able to do this by right under the town's zoning ordinance, current zoning ordinances. And so that doesn't make it right for me, and we've acknowledged and hopefully reconciled the concerns with the neighbors and things like that. And we recognize that we were in the wrong. You know, prior to living at this property, well, actually, prior to about six or eight months ago, I was not a great, I did not have a good understanding of zoning laws and ordinances, which does not recuse me from following them. However, going back to where we lived prior to Royal Lane, turns out we were in an agriculturally-zoned part just outside of the town limits. And so, again, shame on us for not, not knowing the rules and following the proper processes, but we are here to try to make right on that. And so I think, you know, if we weren't serious about this and if these animals weren't part of our, what we consider our family, we would have just caved to the, you know, the violation and gotten rid of them. But we really are passionate about Brutus, Leroy, and Ziggy, and would love to see them finish out their lives with us there on Royal Lane. Thank you for your consideration.
Now we move to motion and discussion. Does anyone have a motion?
I'd like to get some clarification.
Oh, go ahead.
Are we serving as an advisory role, and then the town council makes the decision? There was something about the presentation that made it seem like maybe we make the decision on this vote?
No, we'll make a recommendation.
Make a recommendation. The town council is the one who decides, makes the decision.
Yes.
I'd like to know a little bit more, understand the, if this were to be granted and our recommendation to the town council is to approve it, does that put them in a position where they have to address the zoning ordinance as well on the specific provision?
Yes, with the town code, yes. They would have to amend the town code, too.
So they would have to deal with two, two issues, not the one that we are?
Yes. Yes.
Maybe one more question. What, I noticed that the staff recommendation is to allow this exception for a period of 10 years. I assume that covers the lifespan of all three of these animals.
Well, I'm not sure how long the animals will, they'll live longer. But if they do, then the request will have to be, he'll have to file for another special exception request in order to keep the use on the property.
Excuse me. And, and this would allow just, just these three animals? That's it?
More questions? Anyone with a motion? I can't make a motion.
No, because you're doing.
No, yeah.
All right, well, I'll make a motion so that we can then have a discussion.
Okay.
So I move the planning commission approve the exception request as presented with special conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion friends. Let me also just put out there at this moment that our discussion is relevant to council and the way that they move forward, no matter which way the vote carries. So, you know, I encourage everyone to just kind of say what's on your mind here and what you would like maybe the future to hold or be considered in the future.
Well, I'll go ahead and start. One thing that occurred to me while listening to the presentation is the talk about the animals. And a lot of times with dogs, there's always, there's dangerous breeds and there's noisy breeds. And then there's the small, little cuddly breeds. And, you know, the truth of the matter is different. It's the animal, the way the animals are aged. There can be really small, nice dogs that really cause a lot of issues. And then there can be really big monstrous dogs that are like the sweetest things in the world. So personally, you know, having had dogs and everything, when I look at this, in a lot of ways, you know, we talked about, because they're farm, you know, farm animal. You know, we're thinking about it in that context. Truthfully, these animals would probably be less impactful on the neighborhood than some not very well-trained dogs and everything. So it's, I think, I think the applicant's given a good presentation of why these are probably pretty sweet and lovely animals to be family pets. For me, it is the precedent that would be set in the future. I think we struggle very much to make sure that we're not, you know, capricious in the way we do things. And I do worry in the future, if we were to grant this, then future ones, you know, then you're having to defend what you did once and twice. So it's, it's, from everything that's been presented, you know, I think they look like they're lovely little animals and parts of the family. That's not my chief concern. It is the idea of what it opens us up to and potential for the future. That's really where my huge concern is.
I found it interesting that there are homes in the area that wouldn't need to go through this because of their size in the same neighborhood, which could feel a little awkward, I think, in the future. So I feel like that some things are gonna have to be addressed regardless in terms of what's coming up for that area with these animals. I don't necessarily feel that the future precedent, future concerns rule it out, but I think it's probably something we're going to look at regardless in terms of how we move forward.
So there is an avenue to, for, to request a special exception, right? That's why we're here. So would that not apply to if there are others in the neighborhood that would have to go through that same process and plead their case with whatever their animal requests or whatever may be under that special exception request? I know that, you know, procedures weren't necessarily followed correctly this time through, for whatever reason, you know. I think we can all appreciate that to a certain degree, but at the same time, it's, if the neighbors that are closest to the property have no real issues, I'm not sure that I have a major heartburn again, knowing that other folks would have to go through the same special exception request if they so chose to have certain types of animals that may not fit the checkbox as it sits today.
This is kind of an interesting question because really we're trying to, trying to, we're given a special exception to keep existing pets in essence. So the rub really becomes what is a pet and what is an agricultural use and what is an agricultural animal? I think clearly this is, these are pets. This is not an agricultural use. So maybe that part of the ordinance needs a little massaging as well. On the other hand, I do think that there needs to be some sort of, some sort of procedure to allow animals that are pets that aren't traditional pets. And I think until that gets resolved, I would like to see somehow that this pertains to these specific three animals. And not that one of them dies and you could bring in a substitute for that. I don't know whether that could be microchipping or something, but something that applies to these specific three, three animals. And then I would, the definition of agricultural use as it pertains to pets needs to be looked at a little bit.
Can I ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I ask you a question, Tim?
Yes, sir.
You brought up an interesting point when you mentioned that in this particular specific circumstance, that, you know, the immediate neighbors, and it seems like several of the neighbors are behind it or okay with it. I guess what you're saying is that in future, if we were to grant something, you know, maybe, maybe the justification or granting or not granting would, we would weigh that metric too of, all right, you've asked, because I can't remember, I think with the chicken ordinance, we don't require it, but don't we kind of encourage folks to reach out to their neighbors to kind of let them know that we're thinking about hens, right? So I guess is your idea sort of similar to that in that if, if someone were to come in the future with this, they would, they would kind of need to demonstrate to us that they had already got buy-in from their immediate neighbors?
Obviously, that's helpful.
Right? I mean, not that we require, but that would be part of, of a demonstration.
Right. In this case, we already have neighbors who are saying the current conditions are not a problem for them. If it's done correctly, you wouldn't know that necessarily, right? So you're petitioning to bring in a pot-bellied pig or whatever, and nobody's met it before, right? So that's a little bit, it's different than this particular situation. But it still falls under the special exception request procedure that is, is already in. It's a good idea to get some buy-in from your neighbors. And, yeah, I wouldn't have as much heartburn. And I think Mr. Cassie brings up a great point that, as well as others that have said, what is agricultural use? And I know we have it as less than two acres in RR1, but maybe that needs some further review as well?
I'm thinking it's kind of a little bit like, what's the difference, or what is the tipping point between having dogs as pets and crossing over and do you have a kennel? So there's, you know, kind of a line there. That being said, I'm inclined to agree to the exception.
Right.
Hope that maybe it can be examined a little more in the future to minimize the slippery slope that may be created.
And I'm very sensitive to that precedent comment. Absolutely. That's always could be that slippery slope, but it's, you know, looking at the condition that's before us and the case that's before us today, I have less heartburn with.
From my bit, if you didn't have these animals today and you were asking for this exception, I would tell you no. Because the neighbors have moved to this place with the understanding that there aren't farm animals in the smaller lots where they are more adjacent to them. I think it sets a very dangerous precedent for people to say, oh, I got this pig as a pet and now I'm gonna ask a special exception. And, and we are making this decision without knowing pretty much anything about the way pigs should be kept, the way, you know, you know, I just keep thinking back to the chickens where we had so much information about how much space they were meant to have, the way they were meant to be enclosed, the way they were meant to be heated, when they were meant to be heated. You know, we had all of these rules around the way that these chickens would be kept. And in the special exception case, we have no such understanding, which puts me, you know, in the position of just needing to trust you and only met you twice and I've never seen your house and I've never seen your pigs. And the neighbors closest to you have no problem, but you've gotten somewhat mixed reviews from the neighborhood regarding the animals in question. And, you know, I think that there are a couple of points for us to think about the land use and the way we're supposed to evaluate this question. One, the intent being to keep the noise and the smell down. You don't have noise and smell. That's sort of a point, a land use point in your corner. And I think Ms. Walker makes another point and your neighbor, whether intentionally or not, that there are other places in your neighborhood that could by right do this and could be an equity argument, you know, that, okay, only people with so much money to buy two acres could have a pig as a pet. And so I think that there are a couple of points in your favor and that we could use those as a basis for an exception, a land use basis. But I, I highly encourage council to think long and hard about whether or not pigs should be writ large, allowed in certain areas of our town like the one that the Grabskis live at. And either just, you know, set up rules to say goats and pigs are allowed or not. This, this makes me and has caused me angst since the moment I saw it because I don't care for these animals to have to go away from your family and your home, but I, I don't really feel like there's enough of a land use argument for you to have them there. So, okay, with that, we can go to a vote? Yep.
I could clarify Mr. Ford's motion real quick, that it was with these two conditions. Was it with the third condition as well regarding the, the age? Or that, that the condition would last for 10 years for the animals?
Oh, yeah, the new one. I mean, that's what was on the table, so yes.
So it would be these two conditions. And then can you go to the third condition to clarify that?
It's not written.
So it was in the staff report that was written, that it basically would be that it is, it would be specifically limited to a period of 10 years. So if that 10 years were to expire, then the applicant would have to come back in for an additional special exception at that time. And the attorney was not recommending tying it to the specific animals in this particular situation.
Yes, include the condition, which was follow-up to our questions from the work session. So condition one, two, and add number three for the 10-year limit.
10-year limit. Very good. Great. Thank you very much.
And we still have a second on that, right?
Yes.
Okay, fabulous. All right, then we shall move to a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed?
I abstain.
One abstention. Okay.
Three to two.
Three to two, three to two with one abstention.
Okay.
Wait. Yeah? Yeah, three to two. Okay, yes. Did you get it?
I did not.
Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hands.
If you would, raise if you would. Okay.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Abstention. Okay. And I guess with that, I'll invite Andy back. Go.
And turn it back over.
I know.
Good job.
Great. So we'll move on to our second public hearing for tonight, which is zoning ordinance amendment ZOA 60, ordinance 2001, which is an amendment to amend the text of the town's zoning ordinance to create a new downtown northwest zoning district for the area bounded by North Main Street, Turner Street, and Prices Fork Road. And we can, this hearing was continued from the August 6th public hearing. And I guess we have no staff presentation on this. So we'll move right to motion and discussion. I will lay out before we enter into the motion that what we're addressing here, this ordinance was approved by planning commission two years ago, 2022, and sent forward. Town council did not act on it other than to review our recommendation. And in that recommendation, we had made a certain proposal towards height of the buildings that differed from the consultant's recommendation for how to address height of the building. So it was sent back to us with a proposal from council to evaluate a proposal for a new evaluation of height, which in that, in that was a maximum of 65 feet. And this was discussed in work session. And I believe in work session, what was determined, and we can discuss this before we have a motion, what was determined is that we would like to send this back to council with the recommendation that they, we appreciate the opportunity to evaluate this one condition of height. And that our recommendation is that they look at the original proposal from the downtown Blacksburg strategic plan, the proposal from the consultant to address the height of the buildings. Is there anything we want to add to that? Or did I misinterpret what our determination was from work session?
It was my understanding from our discussion, didn't we request more information and that we were maybe going to not take action tonight and?
That was not my understanding.
I thought we were asking for some visuals and some other things before we moved, I mean, move forward with what you've said. But I, it was my impression that we weren't going to act tonight because we were still waiting for some more information. That was my, that's what I left with, but.
Okay, yeah, that, my, my, my understanding was that we would send it to council with a recommendation for them to accept the proposal from the consultant. And can Mr. Hanrady would approach the consultant to provide some appropriate visuals to reflect that?
I believe staff's understanding was that it would be us providing that, those visuals to the planning commission so that you could make some further evaluation of the impact that height would make as it would, as it would pertain to different vistas around the area.
Okay.
See what that impact of, of height would be and as one, as one aspect of it. And so that there would just be further study prior to, to it going back to. back to, uh, uh, before you all making a recommendation. Now, uh, we, we have, uh, scheduled a time to meet with our consultant that, that did the zoning ordinance, uh, and we have some questions about, to them about how different heights would, uh, would fit into the written text.
Okay.
And then how it would fit into areas such as Turner Street with the wraparound area.
Okay.
Uh, and so we will be meeting with them in the next week or so, and then we're going to be working with our GIS department to do some, uh, to do some visuals, uh, and maybe reaching out to a consultant as well for, for visual, uh, support as well.
Okay, and that'll come back to planning commission?
It would come back. I, I don't believe it would be probably until your October, uh, work session.
Okay. So administratively, we just continue this again?
We would, uh, staff would recommend that you would go ahead and, and make a motion to close it if, and then we would re-advertise, uh, when, when it comes back to the planning commission as, as a republic hearing.
I was unable to attend the work session. I was out of town, but it seems like in the last public hearing, we were also awaiting a finals, results of a study, if I remember correctly. Is that also part of what we're talking about with, with the visual, the visuals, et cetera?
We received those results.
We did, yeah, that was the, that was the economic analysis component.
Okay. Was that presented at the work session?
Uh, it was presented at the council work session and then was followed up with a brief, by the consultants, supported by staff, and then the staff kind of presented it.
Didn't several members of the planning commission attend the council meeting?
There were four members of planning commission.
What, was, is that a document that was distributed to us? I don't recall seeing it.
We would be happy to, to talk, uh, more, uh, with you offline.
Okay, yeah, I, I, it's not too much of a hassle just to be brought up to speed a little bit. Sorry about that.
It's, it's, it's basically an, an economic model.
Okay.
Okay.
If I could say something, Andy, in, in that work session, it felt like, like the members as a whole were leaning towards what you, you stated, but it, it did seem like there was, uh, someone wanted, we wanted some visual.
No, I clearly misunderstood. I thought that we, our, our, we were proposing to move it on and then that, uh, the council would, uh, enjoy the benefit of the, of the visual representation of the worked out council. So I misunderstood.
I don't know if it's appropriate to have a, a discussion, but one thing I'd certainly like for the consultants to see is not just the height issue to me, but it's also, it's a height and a setback issue related to various heights. And, and again, I, I apologize that, um, you know, I'm pretty, I'm very new to, to planning commission and this is a, an issue that predates not just me, but a number of us as I understand it. And so I think we need to have a little bit more background too before we're asked to, uh, to make a, a recommendation if that's possible.
So I guess at this point then, we would just make a motion to close this public hearing.
Do we have to do public comment?
I don't think so.
What, what was your question?
We'll have citizen comment.
Do we have to do public comment?
Well, I think it, we're closing it without taking action. Is that correct?
Correct.
I mean, I think if the public hearing is open and there was someone that, if there's anyone from the public that would want to address you, uh, that would, that would be up to the planning commission, whether you would want to entertain any public comment.
If we advertised it and they came, they should be able to speak to us before we make a decision.
Right. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't re-advertised for tonight, but it was continued from the last public hearing.
I'd love to hear from the public. There's people here who want to speak.
With that, then we'll open a public comment period, uh, for this public hearing for anyone who would like to address the commission, uh, on this particular public hearing.
I'm Thomas Moore. I represent the layowners of 112 and 208 Turner and 607 and 609 North Main. Uh, we just wanted to thank you for the, at the last, uh, public hearing for encouraging staff to include us as we all work to address the challenges in this ordinance. Um, staff connected us with development strategies for a great initial conversation, but we've not been able to have a more complete discussion due to the condensed calendar between the meeting and then the, um, the presentation to the town. After listening to the development strategies presentation to the council, we have an inquiry report, um, for Lewis District of this magnitude and that there's still unanswered questions. For example, to establish the economic viability of a project, we need to understand what reasonable economic return you might expect, uh, on the, based on the total cost of the project. And without these conclusions, we cannot compare different buildings. We feel that the information gathered for this presentation is the starting point and not the endpoint. I mean, so just we requested this ordinance be continued until a more complete discussion of the issues such as building height, minimum acreage, and setbacks can be addressed and we can work together to create a more achievable ordinance. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the commission on this particular public hearing? Okay, hearing none. We'll close that and, uh, we'll have a motion and, uh, potentially discussion. And I think the motion on the table would be to close this public hearing, uh, without action, um, with the intent that with, when further information is available, we'll reopen and re-advertise for a new public hearing.
I moved.
Was that a motion?
I'll just say.
So moved.
Thank you. I'm moving in second. All those in favor of the motion in the second?
Hi.
All right, we'll move on. Well, we'll move on to a citizen comment. At this point, uh, anybody, uh, any member of the, uh, any citizen of Blacksburg can address us on any issue. Hearing none, we'll move on to unfurnished business, zoning ordinance review committee. We have not met, historic or design review board.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Montgomery County Planning Commission.
Yes, so, um, the commission met on the 21st and due to the technology of time travel, I was able to watch it last night to report to you. Um, they considered, uh, one special use permit for a coffee house in an agriculturally zoned area just outside of the village of Reiner, um, and they approved it with conditions, uh, much like some of the things we did. They regulated the hours of operation and, um, if there was future lighting, they added one special condition regarding, uh, screening the dumpsters, which we often add extra things in our conditional permits. At which point they went into work session, uh, to discuss, uh, pending actions for their September meetings. They have actually a kennel approval and this occurs in an agricultural area. And even though it falls under the definition of kennel, it is actually more of a breeding operation, um, and they're going to take that up. Um, and then there was also of interest to us specifically in the town, there's another special use permit, I believe is what it was, for a short, short-term rental, um, single-family home, four-bedroom, uh, at, off of Wright's Way. So if you're up on Harding Avenue and you leave the town of Blacksburg, um, it's, that's where Wright's Way is, so it's very, very adjacent to the town. Uh, the county ordinance in regards to short-term rentals does have requirements regarding, uh, parking, making sure that parking doesn't impact neighbors, so they talked about that. So they're going to hear that next month. I just wanted to offer aside that hearing that there's a four-bedroom home adjacent to our town limits that's not occupied and will be short-term rental just illustrates that the market is not addressing our housing needs the way we need it. Also, I wanted to point out that the planning commission would normally meet on September 11th and the 25th. They are not going to meet on September 11th, that is Patriots Day, and they wanted to keep that open for folks. So their meeting will be on the 25th for, um, whomever is covering the planning, or their planning commission next.
So it's being moved to the 25th?
Yes. Um, and then they also talked recently, Montgomery County created a commercial YouTube video, um, and they shared that, so I shared it. So if we watch the screen up here, we can see their little video about their comprehensive plan that's in process.
The county is undergoing a comprehensive planning process, which will create an ambitious and achievable vision for our community. This long-range document will guide future growth and development, help local officials make wise decisions, and direct investments in local services. The plan addresses various topics, setting a vision for land uses, historic and rural preservation, economic development, outdoor recreation, and other elements that make Montgomery matter. This process will also produce plans for our many villages, including Bellevue, Elliston and Lafayette, Plum Creek, Prices Fork, Reiner, and Shawsville. With our high quality of life and natural beauty, Montgomery County will continue to experience growth in the coming years. Montgomery Matters will explore ways to maximize the positive impacts of that growth while protecting our valued quality of life. As part of the Montgomery Matters process, community members will have numerous opportunities to share their opinions and ideas on how the county should grow and evolve over the next 20 years. We need your help exploring various topics and issues to create a strong plan. Throughout 2024 and 2025, there will be a series of in-person events and virtual activities where you can share your ideas. Visit www.montgomerymatters.com to learn more about this planning effort and how you can get involved. Stay tuned for upcoming events. Thank you for helping to make Montgomery matter.
And I just wanted to add as a follow-up to that and a reminder, because sometimes I think we forget, everybody that's a citizen of Blacksburg is a citizen of the county and so we all have a part to play in their development of that.
Thank you for that report. That was great. Any additional items from planning commissioners? You run a new business, chair's report? I have none. Planning director's report?
I just have a few meetings, uh, to, uh, to make you all aware of, if you weren't aware already. Uh, on Thursday, and there's actually two meetings, uh, coming up on Thursday, uh, that, that are very planning-centric. Uh, one is for the Route 460 Business Quarter Bicycle Pedestrian and Transit Study. That's going to be hosted by the NRV MPO and, uh, this is a, uh, an information gathering session and it's going to be from 4:00 to 6:00 in the Joseph W. Meredith Training and Event Center at the VT Corporate Research Center, and that's at 1691 Innovation Drive. And then there will also be a Brush Mountain Trail Park and Trail System Community Feedback Meeting from 5:30 to 7:00 on Thursday, and that's going to be at the Town Annex, which is the former police department, uh, and, uh, right next to the, uh, to the library. And then, uh, a little bit further in the month, uh, on Thursday, September 26th at 6:30, and, and postcards will be going out to all properties that are zoned R4 in, in the, uh, in the, in the town, uh, and we'll have a press release as well, but, uh, we're going to have a community meeting for the Blacksburg Proposed Small Lots Zoning Amendment. Uh, as you all will recall, you did take action, uh, for a recommendation for this ordinance. Uh, this is just another opportunity for community input prior to it going to town council. And so more information will be coming out, uh, on that meeting before, uh, before the 26th. And that's all I hope.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Andrew. A town council report?
I have nothing.
Great. Are we stand adjourned? Thank you.